All right, everyone. Welcome to the Plington School Committee meeting for Monday, July 12th, 2021 pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting of the Plington School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance. Members of the public has been permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings using Zoom either by computer or telephone. This meeting is being recorded for only and is not considered to be a public record. So I hope folks have so far been having a good summer despite the fact that we all need to build really big boats and we're at three times the rain for July and we're halfway through the month. So there we go. But why don't we dive in? We can see via Zoom who we have on here. And so next up, we have minutes for regular sessions of June 1st and June 14th. Folks have a chance to take a look at those?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the June 1st and June 14th regular session minutes.
A second.
I second.
Amy. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Okay, and Amy?
Yes.
And John is a yes. So there we go. I'll start with that. Give me a sec, folks. I'm gonna, I have to switch which Wi-Fi I'm on, which is why I'm lagging a bit here. Just give me a second, I'll, we'll get going again. Okay, this should be a little better. School committee correspondence. I did not have any myself from since June 14th and none from the administration. Running down here, negotiations. We do not have any active negotiations at this time. We're through both of the, all the contracts were done for 2021 to 2022. So that's good for there. And then on to new business. End of year building and grounds updates. Peter, things have been a little busy.
We have been very busy.
All right.
Absolutely. So we have the playground project, which is kind of ongoing right now. We had a phone call last week or a meet last week and we finalized colors. And Joe Dufour gave us the word that it would be both five weeks out before everything was actually shipped out to the school. So that's, that's very, very real and very happening. We have the siding project going on on the western facing wall of the building. That's an ongoing project. We've had some paving done. We've had some parking lot ceiling and line striping done. We've had 15 trees removed from the property to help out with the solar project. And we've had some weatherization being done to the building. We've had folks looking at the roof and exterior doors and trying to patch things up and just make the building more efficient and more cost effective.
And just so folks know, because there was a little bit of scrambling since our last school committee meeting and tonight with the siding. So we had an opportunity really last minute to be able to come up with an option to sort out that wall, which is really, it's the cafeteria wall, which if you've noticed, there's a little less paint than siding at this point. And unfortunately, the siding on the building is, is made out of what I would assume to be like a medium density fiberboard or some sort of fiberboard. And it's great until it gets wet. So once it breaks through the paint, the siding just expands and then it breaks more paint and then gets more wet and so on and so forth. Because that wall gets the majority of the sun. That wall is sort of the worst one there. And so our most excellent facilities director made a recommendation to take that siding off and put a five inch vinyl product on there. And because of course no color matches the color we have on the building, decided to go a little different route in match and really color match the blue accents that we have on the building. So we're gonna have a new blue wall there, which I think will be a real, will be something interesting and different for us to take a look at. And it, and it helps overall to, to sort of stay the deterioration. And a lot of, some of the other walls are actually absolutely fine at the moment, but eventually we will have to replace siding around the entire building. And that will be a less rushed project. As I understand it, we had some money left in the budget. And so there was the opportunity to be able to get that done within the existing funds. So that's, that's just a little extra color on that. So we were kind of, kind of scrambling, but we were able to get that in under, under that. And yeah, Peter, I did drive by and saw the driveway up there, all one color for a change. That was, I didn't go up, but I'm editing something. And yeah, and getting those trees down, not only does it help the solar, but I think it also helps to protect that side of the building.
Absolutely.
Those trees, I think every one that came down was within striking distance of the building. And of course, if we had one fall on that roof, or one good roof on the entire building, they would damage it and then leave it up to be replaced because you can't really fix the metal roof once you have something that's landed on it and breaks it. So all really positive. And then the weatherization is part of a Green Communities grant, I believe. So it's not something that the, that the school is picking up, but it's rather an energy efficiency grant from the, from the state that because the town is part of the Green Communities endeavors, we were able to have access to that. So that's a nice added benefit as well.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Unfinished business. I know that, Peter, you were able to get some bags out for the, for the dispenser there. So that's out there. I'm not sure we've been using the fields too much since the last meeting. I think you had the big, the big World Cup event, but I don't know if we've, if we've seen any, any benefits from the bags as yet.
I haven't noticed anything yet, John, but replacing them, I think will definitely help. So.
So we'll, we'll see how things go in the summer and then as we get into the fall, we can revisit and figure out what next we need to do, should that continue to be a hassle. Peter already touched on the playground. I didn't know if there were any other questions that folks wanted to bring up, but the project is moving forward. We've, we selected, of course, we met on the 14th to select the contractor and going on. So Christine, did you want to speak to that?
I just wanted to add a little, I mean, you know, I was on that call with Peter as well. And this, later this week, we'll get the exact date of the shipment and then we'll go backwards from the shipment date for the removal of the current playground and the excavation work that has to happen. So we should know that later this week. So we'll start our, our timetable will be set in motion.
When we get that, can we just send a note to the committee just to give us, just to give folks an idea? Just because we won't meet again until, unless we have to.
A note to, as to what the delivery date is?
Yeah, and, and, yeah. Because I'm sure some people get questions about how we're doing, getting up to the reopening of school, even though I thought we just left, but we're already thinking of that, of course. Because our next meeting is late September, I believe. Yeah. September 20th. So that will hopefully be all done by then. That's the goal. Anything else on the playground? Solar project, as we mentioned, the trees came down. Engineer came out and took a look at the roof and reported no issues from perspective, engineering perspective. We are working with Council for the Town on the various agreements. And likely we will, I was talking to the attorney this afternoon and he said, we probably as a school committee should vote the actual agreement. And he said, well, have we done that? I said, well, no, we haven't done it because we don't have the agreement. And the specifics of it are done. So we may have to schedule a ad hoc meeting at some point later in the summer when that's all done with that being the sole agenda, so that, item, so that we can get that sorted. They are still hopeful that they can get this up and done before the start of school. And if the timing doesn't work out, then we'll have to work around that. But because of the, because of the roof that we're putting it on, it's a pretty simple installation for them to get it up and on there, because it really just clips on to the, onto the ridges of the standing seam roof. So we'll, we're back and forth. There was still some confusion about whether we were doing a canopy, which we are not. This is limited to the two sides of that roof. And everything else has gone well. So we're still looking at probably somewhere between six and a half and seven cents for the, for the kilowatt hour cost that we would have to pay, which is a, Christine's done a lot of work to, to get us really good prices, but that's still a savings off of what that is. And Christine, I thought you were in what, nine and a half cents, I think, for the next year, something like that, or 9.8?
Oh, for my electricity, I, I, I know it's the nine cent range. I could, I might look that up and I can get back to you on it.
Yeah, so.
But yeah, we were pretty fortunate.
So that would be a savings for the energy that we generate and thus will buy directly from, it's like, so we're generating all the energy and the energy goes into the grid, but then we will, we get to for energy that we generate, we will pay six and a half to seven cents. And then anything extra that we need, we will then pay the other rate. So it's a pretty good savings. And of course, that rate is locked in for the, for the solar. So over time, that rate should get better because we would assume that the other rates would go up. I think the assumption in the, in the proposal was a 2% increase per year over the, over the time period. So that should be pretty good. So moving on to standing, standing committees. I don't believe, there hasn't been, I don't believe there's been any admin review or negotiations or Union 31 since the last meeting. And then for PAC, unfortunately, Dan was not able to make it tonight. He had a work commitment. So I don't have an update there. And policy hasn't met. Jason, I didn't know if you have anything else there? No? I love a summer meeting. Nothing on capital improvement. So then legislative, do you have something for legislative?
I do. And if I'm lagging, please just cut me off. So quite typically, we didn't end the fiscal year with the state budget, but this morning Governor Baker should have arrived at his office with a budget from both sides of the legislature for $48.1 billion. For all I know, he could have signed it by today. Extra revenue was on the table and I need to applaud the legislature and the governor for not adding to the budget. Instead, they set aside those funds for future obligations. They put $250 million aside for unfunded pension liabilities, sort of like we do for OPEB at the, at the town level. They also created a $350 million trust fund to support the Student Opportunity Act. Instead of having a two-month-long tax holiday for shopping, it's still gonna be just the typical weekend. Again, this is to keep that revenue on the table. So August 14th and 15th should be that tax-free holiday. We have fought with the superintendents, the school committees and the superintendents to try and get the MCAST data to be sent out to the schools as soon as possible this year. So we could use that data to help us with our students returning. And that data has been sent to districts, though it's embargoed at this point, which means it can't be disseminated to parents or the general public. It can be viewed by the administration and then shared out over time with the teachers, again, to look at those scores and any trends we see grade-wise or in individual students. Also like to acknowledge that today, the Superintendent's Association started their in-person Executive Institute. And MASC, the School Committee Association, is also having a summer institute this Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00 in Marlborough. And the two topics that will be covered is wraparound services, which are services that extend beyond the typical school day. And also budgeting with federal funds, how to maximize the use of those funds without creating what's called a fiscal cliff. If you become too reliant on those funds for your day-to-day operations, when those funds evaporate, you find yourself in quite a pickle. So again, that's the MASC Summer Institute and it's from 8:00 to 12:00 in Marlborough. That does not cover anyone for the charting the course. But these two opportunities, both from the superintendent and the school committees, is the first time we've had large gatherings since the pandemic. And it's gonna help us lay the groundwork for the November joint conference that we hold down in Hyannis between the superintendents and the school committees. That will be a hybrid event this year. So anybody who doesn't have the ability to go down to Hyannis or still feels uncomfortable can do it remotely. And those of us who have the time and the inclination to be in person will have that opportunity this year as well.
Okay, any questions for Jason? Excellent. Christine, I know we did have some various single signature warrants.
Yes, we've had a couple of them. On June 28th, five warrants totaling $132,844.91 were sent to the superintendent and John Williamson, and they were signed in return. Thank you very much. And then today for our closeout, we had seven warrants totaling $144,272.74. And they were sent to the superintendent and John, and they were returned before our meeting. So we're all caught up. We're all up to date. Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, under our standing committees, we have not had any Health and Safety Advisory Committee meetings. And you know, perhaps we will, perhaps we'll hold one late in, maybe in August. We'll just have to see where things stand because things are pretty fluid right now. And if it's, if that's necessary, we'll pull that together and report back to the committee. And if not, if everything's under control, then we'll just get together again in September 20th. Amy, anything from CASA or things all quiet because it's summer?
Things are all quiet right now, John.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Benito, we'll go to you for any other school and staff updates?
Absolutely. I'm currently interviewing for three positions right now. We had Mrs. Mary Ellen Smith, who was an aide who retired. I'm looking to fill that position. Our math interventionist Paige Sylvia has moved out of state and we wish her well. I'm looking to fill that position. And we are still looking at that building-based substitute and we're interviewing for that position currently as well. So that's, we, like I said, not only have things been busy on the, the physical plant, but we've been doing a lot of virtual interviews as well. So I'm sure we'll find some, some excellent people.
And, and the thing is sort of a little more back to normal. There's people that actually find?
Yes. Amazingly, we've had some people that have applied and we have some, some challenging decisions to make, but I think as always, we'll, we'll make the decisions. So it's a good sign.
Well, that's an improvement. I'll take it.
Yes.
Any questions for Peter?
Yeah, I have. Peter, could you just explain the building-based sub, what we're looking for as far as qualifications? Are we looking for a fully certified teacher for that position or not?
Absolutely, yes. That, that's the goal right now, Jason. And I think that based on what I've seen from people that have applied, I think we should be able to achieve that. And I want to make sure that the person, if possible, is SEI endorsed as well and has all the pedigree that I would be looking for, for a regular classroom teacher hire.
Great. Christine, over to you.
Thank you very much. As you know, this is the end of our financial year for the school district. As you know, if, but thank goodness we're gonna move forward. We have picked up the pieces and tried to figure out what the best path is and how to get there. We've had some highs and some lows and all those have been reflected in the budget. We've had a little bit of everything. We've had some areas, we've had some savings within the budget, the teaching line specifically, because we had some movement that took place there. The substitute line, we had some funds left over because we struggled to find a building-based sub during the, during the year, actually. We've had savings and tuition and workshop lines. I know workshops have had some available at the district level through some grant funding that we had, but we just have not had the tuition reimbursement this year that we have in the past. We've also had some savings from our transportation line, both our regular day and homeless transportation that totaled about $9,000. And even our utilities, which were a big surprise to me, have a savings of about $5,000 because I was really concerned with just, you know, how we're running HVAC systems, just all the new and unique things were happening, but we, we made it through the year. So I'm really pleased. One deficit that you will see on the financial is in the maintenance of building area. We are fortunate enough to have funds transferred from the town into that line at special town meeting. Some of the funds came from special education, some from auto district vocational. But things that we were able to do, we were able to fully fund our spent stabilization account. Yay. Do the balance of the work on the fire suppression system that, as Pete noted, noted earlier, we were able to finish the tree removal project and the driver repairs. So we've made, I think we've made a lot of progress this year. After we get past that point, we, we will be returning about $61,572 to the town of Plington from the regular day budget. Special education is a surplus in total of about $46,693. There's a surplus in the contracted services line that contributed to this. And that's because there were some therapies in home services that did not happen to the extent that they have in the past. So we've had some savings there. And then also transportation, because there were some remote days. So we do have a savings in the transportation line and special education. And then in auto district vocational, we have a final surplus of $3,844. That was after a transfer out of $41,800 at special town meeting to work with the projects. And in total, between those three lines, we're returning $113,416.13. And that does include, out of the current year budget, I did take into account the funding that we used for the architect engineer that's working with us. So I had paid for those fees out of that line and encumbered the summer from that. And we have paid for the wood chip, where we will be paying for the wood chips and the swing mats out of, out of the operating budget also. So that's it, unless there are any questions.
So the, the 113, is that the final closeout plus the other closeout balance? Is that how we get to 113?
113 is the regular day, special education and auto district vocational. The surplus balances in each one of those accounts after encumbrances.
Okay. So was the, I just, maybe I'm just confused. So is that, is that a change from the memo that, that Lisa sent out shortly before the meeting?
Well, I hope not because I have a copy of it right here. So let me.
Okay, I think that's it. So I think it's the 109 plus the.
Plus the 3,844. You're correct. Yes, that's, that's what it is. Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mention that.
Again, really, I'm looking for the simple number and all of a sudden I had to do addition and it was a whole different thing. So.
I'll try to make sure I have that, that number noted there.
Perfect. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood because if I go on.
No, thank you for asking questions. You, we're kind of in a little, we're in a little rush mode. So I feel like I, like tonight I slid into home plate and I tried to check and double check and stuff can still happen. So please ask questions.
So this will be good news. This is much more than what we thought we were gonna return, even, even with all of the other things we were able to, to expand. So.
Right. I was, I was mindful of the fact that the 20,000 that was transferred to town meeting that we were not gonna be making use of and some of the other savings areas that they were true savings so that, you know, we would return that to the town. And special education, it's just the way the year and that we had turned out. So. Yeah, that's.
Do you need a motion on the final closeout number to return to the town?
What we've traditionally done is to say, to accept the closeout as presented.
Okay. So I'd make a motion up the closeout as presented.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And John is a yes. And Christine, thanks to you and the rest of the business staff for all the work on this. I know this is, especially this year, a lot of, lot of juggling and, and, you know, we were able to make it work even with all the, everything that was going on. So it's, it's much appreciated.
Thank you. This is the day we get, tomorrow we get to breathe. It's, and figure out what else has to be done. Thank you.
And then.
Single signature signer is here because you are the single signature signer for the Plinton School Department. We just need to see if they would like to maintain that. And if we would, then we would just need to take a vote. So the town would have that for their records that that's what the school committee has decided.
Okay, so we'll need, we'll need a motion to continue with doing a single signature signer for myself?
So moved.
Okay, we have a second.
I second.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And John is a yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine. Dr. Pro?
Evening, everyone. I wanted to update you on a few district events and pieces of information that have taken place since the last time we met. The Kingston Board of Health has asked our nurse leader to advertise a clinic that's going to be held at Kingston Intermediate School for those who choose to participate for residents of Halifax, Kingston, Plinton and, and Duxbury ages 12 and up. So information will be coming out from Nurse Beck to all of our communities, from the Board of Health, should parents and adults and staff who, who wish to be vaccinated, they will be welcome at the Kingston Intermediate School site. We have some tentative dates of July 24th, 25th, August 15th and August 16th. This week, an email went out to all school committee members regarding MCAST accountability levels. If any new members did not receive that email, if you could please let me know, I, I apologize and I will be sure to forward that to you. But I think I had a complete listing when I sent that. But if I missed you accidentally, please don't hesitate and I will get that information to you. The department will not issue new accountability determinations for the fall of 2021. Instead, we will keep our 2019 accountability status. We will resume regular accountability reporting in the 22, 23 school year. And we do have Dropbox access, Dropbox access to some preliminary data, which is embargoed, but will help our principals and, and teachers as they begin to think about potential interventions for our students in the upcoming year. For the fall, schools will be required to be in person full-time, five days a week. All DESI health and safety requirements will be lifted. This includes physical distancing. The Department of Education will collaborate with the Department of Health to issue any additional health and safety recommendations over the summer. And we will provide any updates to you as soon as we receive them. But the Department of Education continues to work for the Department of Health with regards to what the expectations will be for the fall. We have a number of summer learning opportunities. Our extended year program began today at, within an elementary school. And for that program, that is not a new program. That is to support students with disabilities who are likely to fall behind in programming over the summer months. The need for end of school year or extended school year is an IEP team determination. So that's how students are invited to participate in that particular program. We'll also be offering an accelerated summer learning academy. This is standards-aligned lessons that meet the academic needs of participating students. It is going to be project-based and it will incorporate ELA, math and social emotional learning. This is for students entering grades three through six. And this program is for students in Kingston, Halifax and Plinton. And that will be taking place at Kingston Intermediate School. And that begins on August 16th. The Silver Lake Middle School Enhancement Program began today. And that's for selected students in grades seven and eight. And again, activities here will support literacy, math and social emotional growth. And again, the focus is on acceleration in our, in our elementary and middle school programs. And by that, we don't mean going faster. By that, we mean working with students on tightly aligned project or problem-based opportunities where they, the learning is actually enhanced. Research shows that students actually can cover more of the, the intent behind the standards by going deeper into these kinds of problems where students investigate, there's voice and choice and their real-life, authentic applications in many cases. And so it's, it's a great way to look at accelerating the learning as opposed to remediation, which we know oftentimes just further exacerbates the problem or, or makes the gap even wider for students who might be having difficulties. So we're excited about the opportunities that we're able to provide this summer for, for some of our students. And some of those programs have already began. I also wanted to mention to the committee that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee discussed the possibility of examining a later start time for its secondary schools. But before they got too far in that discussion, they wanted me to mention to each of the elementary school committees the possibility of whether or not you would like to consider a committee with representatives from each of the schools the possibility of whether or not you would like to consider a committee with representatives from each of the schools to consider the benefits and the costs associated with that kind of a change. And I know this is something that the Silver Lake Committee has examined in the past. But they, they didn't want to go too far in their discussion without mentioning it to the elementary schools and getting feedback with regards to the possibility of that kind of committee and making sure there was interest among the elementary schools to, to send representation.
I mean, we, we, for some of the newer members, I mean, we looked at this five years ago. Five, Jason, yeah. And did a whole study of that and then did some surveys and all of that. And you know, it's always, it's always, it's always a challenge, but I think we've seen more communities make these changes since we last looked at this. And so, you know, it, it's probably one of those things to, that's worth considering and, and also not something that can be done in any one, in any one part of the district. So, you know, Silver Lake can't just do it without dealing with the impact to the elementaries or Plimpton can't decide to do it without the other schools. So it probably makes sense to talk about that again. So, Jason, go ahead.
Yeah. So it was about five years ago, John, and we had a tremendous, a response from the community when we surveyed them on their preferences. And ironically, it was about fifty fifty about keeping the times the way they were and changing the times. But all of the research out there, all the brain based research does show that later start times for adolescents in our high school population is, is beneficial in reducing accidents on the way to school, improving SAT and test scores and GPAs. And just also with their mental health, just knowing their, their rhythms of when they fall asleep at night and when they're fully awake during the day. First period is almost a wash with a lot of our students because their brains are still trying to go back to sleep. And we would benefit from talking about this at the district level because I know the state is discussing and has been discussing setting up a formal commission to study this and then send dictates down to, to individual districts. So I think if we take the reins now and we examine it ourselves, we'll have a little bit more control over how this ends up looking for our district.
You know, and anecdotally, you know, when, when we went back at the beginning of May, you know, with, for, for both of my high schoolers, they, they had a tough time. I mean, you know, in, I mean, it was only two days a week that they had to be up and out and, and in class, you know, whereas they could pretty much get up, hopefully brush their teeth and then, you know, get on class for the remote days. And, you know, it was a much, I don't know, it seemed to be, even though, you know, being remote wasn't ideal, the, the rhythm was much better. You know, so, but, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of challenges as to how, how you make this work and which is, which is why, you know, they, we kind of left everything alone from a district perspective because it all came back as sort of roughly even. And, but I, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to take a look at it again. So to that end, Jill, was there any discussion about how many people we would be sending from? I mean, a couple of people from each committee or?
They meant, yeah, they mentioned about one to two, based on interest.
And that way we keep out of the quorum issues for the individual committees as well. So why don't we, if, if folks have a burning desire right now, you can raise your hand or you can reach out, reach out afterwards. You know, just to myself and Jill and just let us know if you would like to, like to jump on that. And what they're thinking of starting this up in the fall or in the fall? Yep. Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the startup, the study could not actually change the.
Correct. Right now. No. That will, I think regardless of even what comes out of the study, there will be some time associated with, with being able to, to turn the ship because this would be a big change. And, and, and potential cost to it as well. That would have to then be absorbed within each of the district's budgets. So we'll have to see.
So my other item is the ESSR update and Brian is on vacation this week. I'm happy to say, well deserved. But he's provided me with some information. He is our ESSR guru and Plimpton has been awarded eighty five thousand, eight hundred and forty one dollars in ESSR two funding. The grant was submitted in June and approved by the Department of Education. And the district can access funds beginning in July, on July first, twenty twenty one. The priorities that were listed with input from coordinators and principals for the ESSR two funding across the district included professional development related to student mental health, assessing and addressing the learning needs post pandemic, technology and materials to support high quality teaching and learning, improvements to technology infrastructure, support with understanding by design and curriculum mapping, the effective use of learning spaces, building safety and security, social emotional, student and staff survey that are aligned with CASL and Second Step. He has also noted some, the ESSR two allowable activities, and I'll just briefly summarize them for you because each of the ESSR grants have slightly different wording or emphasis. And for ESSR two, the allowable activities include, well, they're intended to help schools and districts safely reopen with a focus on acceleration rather than remediation. And we talked about that a little bit earlier when we talked about the summer programming and our focus on acceleration versus remediation. Academics and instruction, evidence based approaches to address unfinished teaching and learning. It can be used for high quality instructional materials using the curate tool on the Department of Education sites. Early literacy programming, K through twelve math, skill building, planning and implementing summer learning and after school programs and providing principals with resources to address individual school needs, which is pretty open ended. But intended to focus on academics and instruction. And then social emotional supports is another big area. Parent and student engagement to address student mental health, well being and engagement and learning. This must be evidence based activities. It could include things like tracking attendance and improving student engagement, activities to address the unique needs of low income children, students with disabilities, English learners, students experiencing homelessness in foster care youth, including outreach and service delivery. A minimum of ten thousand dollars must be committed to student mental health, to supports and services. And it can also be used to address ongoing planning, coordinating and provision of services related to COVID nineteen, including educational technology, supplies and services that enable remote learning, school ventilation systems, COVID nineteen testing, PPE and other supplies and services to implement public health protocols. That is the, actual document is even more detailed than that, but that's a, a pretty good summary of, of the main areas that we can, we can use this money to help at the, at the elementary school as well as district wide with our grant funding. The total Silver Lake and Superintendent Union Thirty One allocation is five hundred forty three thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty one.
And Jill, that number you just quoted is, that's ESSR two?
That's ESSR two.
So that's aside from ESSR three, which is substantially larger.
Which we, which we received updates on today. Which we're, we're looking at now to see to what extent our amounts have changed. But they, they took ESSR two funding that hadn't been claimed and then they reallocated that to ESSR three.
Going up instead of down is good.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any, yes, Jason, go ahead.
Yes. Again, I, I know I mentioned this before, but I would really like us to look at using some of this one time funding to look at potentially Mr. Benito, some mentoring from someone who's not an evaluator. Maybe looking at doing core values again for our, our building. I think that we need to take this opportunity to reinvest in what the community of the Denon means and really reestablish those norms for our students and our families and our faculty. And this is a tremendous opportunity to be able to do that with pretty substantial federal funds that wouldn't take away from our day to day operating budget. And again, I would like us to look at a unified social health curriculum. I know Second Step has served us well in the past, but it's more of individual lessons. It's not a cohesive philosophy. So I, I'm, I don't want to dictate what social emotional curriculum we should be implementing, but I would like us to examine and look into that with these funds.
And I believe that's the intention with the Social Emotional Learning Task Force, which is going to become pre K through twelve. We established one about a year and a half ago, right before the pan, just before the pandemic. When we noticed gaps in our social emotional and our anti bullying needs. And so a task force was established to look at that at the elementary level and to, to put Second Step into place. But that certainly isn't as comprehensive as we would like it to be. And so we're, we're looking to not only align with secondary schools as well. But also to continue social emotional supports and curriculum in all of our, in all of our schools. And as part of our administrative retreat and the, the quarter findings and the strategic plan, we also talked about our, our core values and to the extent at which they would influence our, our goals for the upcoming school year. And I know that you're, you're referring specifically to Denon Elementary School, but it's, it's also a part of our goals to make sure that there is not only vertical, but also horizontal alignment and to, to create a consistent and high quality experience for all of our, our students in all of our schools. So we're excited about that and the way that those core values have played out. Not only in the entry findings, but in our summer work that we've already started and will continue to work on. And I, I know that Pete is, is dedicated to looking into how and what that will look like at Denon Elementary School and working with his staff and his community to further refine and, and celebrate the things that make Denon Elementary School unique and wonderful place to, to learn and grow.
Great. Thank you for that information, Joe. That, that's good to know. And just speaking of the strategic plan that you mentioned, how much longer do we have on the current strategic plan? I know you were part of implementing it, but I know it wasn't the one that you brought into existence. So when are we looking at potentially starting in the process again?
We're looking at implementing a strategy for district improvement and introducing that to the school committees as early as the fall. It will contain unfinished elements of the previous plan, but it will be a new plan that's rooted in the findings and the experiences of the administrative team and the community post pandemic. Obviously, we have been on a journey together and we have learned things about ourselves and about our students that have, have shed new light on things and, and opened up new possibilities for us. And so we're going to take those learnings and help help celebrate the positive aspects of, of how we've learned and grown as a result of some of those struggles and challenges.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other questions, comments? No, well, thank you. So just, we have just a couple of dates to remember. In service for teachers is August thirtieth and thirty first with a day, first day of school is September first, as late as it can be. Labor Day is the sixth. And our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is September twentieth. As I said earlier, it's likely we will need to get together briefly to look at solar piece of that. If we do that, you know, we'll get it out ahead of time with the highlights and that would hopefully be a very, very brief meeting, pretty much just to get that sorted. You know, it's all sort of new for, for us in dealing with this. This is not, not our forte. So we have helped from, you know, attorney that does this specifically as well as the assessor's office and the board of selectmen and the town administrator. So we'll get through this and hopefully can get that all sorted so that that's done and done as well. And so with that, I would, I hope everyone has a, an excellent summer, especially when it stops raining for a little bit. And it's a little bit of time to relax. Jill, I hope you and the administration are able to take that week without your phone ringing. And we will see everyone on September twentieth, if not before then. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Much appreciated. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You too.